I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 6th Board of Education meeting. Just want to start off by saying sincere thanks to the community for voting yes for our school budget for the 2023-2024 school year. We're very excited about this budget and all the programs and offerings and improvements, so thank you very much for coming out and voting yes. Also, congratulations to trustee Jill Constantino, who received the highest number of votes in the election, and because she received the highest number of votes, she was seated immediately. So she was already sworn in at our district office and already began serving and is here tonight, and we welcome you, Jill.
Thank you.
And congratulations to Rob Krakowski and Sean Fallon, who will officially begin their terms July 1st. They will be sworn in at our reord meeting on July 5th, and they're joining us tonight to watch and listen and start the onboarding process, so welcome. And sincere thanks and appreciation to Vito Catania and Judah Holstein for your many years of dedication and service to the Board of Education. We very much appreciate all your hard work, and we will be discussing this more at our next board meeting. And also, I just want to say that we had a wonderful weekend of events here at our schools, the Middle School International Night and the We Are Eastchester event were big hits, and thank you to everyone who had a part in that, Ms. Logan and Ms. Perry and Ms. Labou at the middle school, Cara Di Palito, who is the heart and soul of the We Are Eastchester event, she's our sixth grade ELA teacher, it was really her idea to come up with that event from the DEI committee, so we thank Cara for all her hard work. Thank you to all the parents who volunteered. We had, at both events, we had so many tables representing so many different countries and foods from Turkey and Pakistan and Taiwan, it was fabulous. And thank you to all the students who performed and showed us their talents. And thank you to the PTA Cultural Committee, who were a huge help this year in planning that event for us. And thank you to all the staff who volunteered, and it was just a really wonderful heartfelt warming event. It was really a wonderful event, so thank you to everyone who came and participated. Yes, please. Yes, please.
Okay, just to piggyback off that sentiment, I want to thank the Greenville PTA for an absolutely fabulous Greenville night on Friday night. The little, you know, spotty rain did not dampen our spirits, they had the bubble bus, DJ, food trucks, dancing robots, kids of all ages had an absolute blast, as did the parents and families, so sincere thank you to Greenville, it was a wonderful event and it was a great way to end off the year, so thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Just one thing to add to, excuse me, to Jackie's point, special thank you to everyone at Greenville. I'm actually not a Greenville parent, I'm an Anne Hutch parent, and they were gracious enough to extend an invite to everyone on the board, and it was really nice to see everyone coming together, and hopefully in the future we can do more things like that across both schools, so thank you again.
Yes, agreed, I was there as well, it was fantastic, thank you. Thank you to Natalie Barrow for inviting us. Okay, I think that's it, and we are up to superintendent's report.
Whatever's there.
Yes.
Here's the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, members of the board and a full house, members of the community and school administrators and officials, it's a real delight to have you all here this evening. It's an evening of celebration, and we want to celebrate tenure teachers, new teachers to the district, our students, many of whom are here, and well, let's begin with the agenda and get the show rolling, okay? So, first of all, our tenure rewards, here you have the names of the teachers who are with us tonight, and I'm going to call the teachers up to the podium, one by one, and then our board president will recite the resolution that the board will act on granting them tenure. As you know, tenure means that you have completed a period of service in the district in a satisfactory, effective, and hopefully highly effective way, and all of these teachers have done so. They've been observed by their principals, who are here tonight, and we'll ask them to announce themselves at a certain point as well. And so let's begin with the teachers who are up for tenure, and would you come up here and join me as I call your name? Would Bianca Gelpi, would you please come up and join us, and let's give Bianca a round of applause. Bianca is our school psychologist from the Anne Hutchinson School. Christina Caridi, Christina, would you come forward? Christina is from the Greenville School, Physical Education. Marina Druzyk, Marina, would you come forward? Marina is from Eastchester Middle School and is in the tenure area of Special Education. Kathleen Gallagher, Kathleen. Kathleen teaches Social Studies at the Eastchester Middle School. Kyle McGowan, Kyle. Kyle teaches Social Studies at the Eastchester Middle School. Kevin Nugent, Kevin. Kevin is a special educator, again, at the Eastchester Middle School. And finally, Shannon Nicholson. Shannon is a shared teacher in Health Education between both the middle and the high school, so welcome here. I would also ask the principals of these wonderful teachers, would you please stand up and join us here? Dr. Keane, Mrs. Paul O'Connor, and assistant principals, and please, join us all, come on here. Let me close here, okay? So we have our principals here, and of course our central administrators, Mr. Wayne, Dr. Stowe, et cetera, they've done the evaluations as well. So before we take any pictures, our board president will now read the resolution, and the board will vote on the resolution officially.
Okay. Whereas the following teachers have been found to perform effectively during their four-year probationary appointments, and whereas the superintendent of schools recommends these teachers for tenure based on his observations and ongoing evaluations from school principals and district administration, be it resolved that the Board of Education appoint the following teachers to tenure within their respective tenure areas. Marina Druzyk, Kathleen Gallagher, Kyle McGowan, Shannon Nicholson, Kevin Nugent, and Bianca Baptiste Gelpi. Do we have?
Motion, Mr. Wayne.
Okay, Jackie?
I'll second.
Do we have a second? Matt? Okay, all in favor? All right. Yay! Did you say all the names? I don't know. Kristy, did you say all the names? Did you say all the names? Did you say all the names?
I miss Kristy.
Yeah, if we can get everybody in front of the podium here, because we got to switch in two lines here.
And Christina Caridi? Congratulations!
Thank you.
Okay, and now we'll move to our students, and for this portion of the program, I'd like to ask our high school principal, Dr. Capuano, to introduce our valedictorian and salutatorians. Dr. Capuano.
Thank you. It's my pleasure tonight to be with you and to share with the community the names of the valedictorian and salutatorian, but before I do that, I want to talk a little bit about what they're also part of, which is the top 10% of the class of 2023, to give you a little bit of context. Last night we were able to celebrate...
I don't think your microphone's on.
Is this on now?
I think it just has to be high, yeah.
There we go. Better? Thank you. Last night we were able to celebrate the top 10% of Eastchester High School, and I wanted to share a little bit about them before I talk to the top, talk about the top two of the top 10%. The top 10% of our students have taken 202 APs and 11 classes for college credit, that's almost two full bachelor's degrees worth of college credit. They've been involved in 114 clubs and activities, participated on 20 athletic teams, and were admitted to 53 honor societies. The top 10% have been, have earned acceptances to the following universities in the fall: Binghamton University, we have two students going there, Bucknell, Carnegie Mellon, we have two students, University of Connecticut, Cornell, we have four students, Florida State, Fordham, Georgia, Johns Hopkins, Marist, Northwestern, Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute, the University of Scranton, SUNY Buffalo, University of Tennessee, and Villanova. Our top 10% are going to those schools and will represent Eastchester well there next year, and for those teachers and elementary school folks and middle school folks in the audience, thank you very much, because you contributed and you were the foundation to get them where they're going in the fall. Now to speak about the two students who over the last four years have had the highest weighted averages at Eastchester High School, and I'd invite the guys to come up, please, Theodore Jeliaskov and Joye Zo. John F. Kennedy, a president known for his passion in educate, for education, once extolled Thomas Jefferson in these words. He referred to him as a person who, quote, "could calculate an eclipse, survey an estate, tie an artery, plan an edifice, try a cause, break a horse, dance a minuet, and play the violin." In his example, he showed that Jefferson had an understanding of English and history, math and science, art and music, and he also had to be physically fit enough to, quote, "break or train a horse." And we know based on his successes that he had the knack for business and an understanding of foreign language. What I can say unequivocally this evening is that both our valedictorian and salutatorian can be described in the same way, except maybe they have never broken a horse. Who are they? Our salutatorian this year for the class of 2023 is Theodore Jeliaskov. He took eight AP classes and one class for college credit while in the high school and demonstrated a dedication to both his academics and his other interests. In the Advanced Science Research Program, he studied the Gene Drive Genetic Engineering Method for three years. Not only did he study this theory, but he also independently took Python and Java programming courses, as these advanced computer technologies were needed to complete his study. In addition, one of the things I just learned in the cafeteria at the Advanced Science Research Symposium is that Theo's work is going to be published in a peer-reviewed journal in the very near future. Most master's level students, many doctoral students, never can say they've been published. He's 18, and he's going to be published. He's also dedicated as a musician, serving as the vice president of our concert band. Theo is most proud that he played drums with the jazz band in the MetLife Building in New York City. He'll be majoring in statistics in the fall at Cornell University. Congratulations. In the valedictorian of the class of 2023, Joye Zo. Joye took 10 APs and one class for college credit, including BC Calculus as a junior, and a summer class of his own volition in linear algebra. He's the president of the National Honor Society, a mock trial officer, and the treasurer of the ski club. As part of his Advanced Science Research Project, Joye designed his own 3D-printed myoelectric upper forearm prosthetic arm and won the David M. Holmes Engineering Innovation Award at the Regeneron Westchester Science and Engineering Fair. Joye is also a dedicated musician, having been in our band for four years. He will be majoring in engineering in the fall at Carnegie Mellon University. Congratulations. The last thing I'll say about them is they have tremendous academic accomplishments. What I will say beyond that is they have a level of humility and kindness and integrity that we wish for all of our kids. I would say that is at least equal, if not a bigger achievement that we've seen with both of these young men. I can't wait to hear where they're going to be in five or six years. Congratulations, guys.
Do you guys want to step in front of the podium? Tell us it's yours. Thank you.
That's better, right? Thank you very much, Dr. Capuano, and our valedictorian and salutatorian. Let's move on to something very different. Our varsity flag football team was invited here several months ago, with high expectations and high hopes. Well, they're back tonight to tell us what they've done, and no better person to do that, Coach, come on up.
Yeah, sure, why not? They earned it. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Education, Dr. Valenti, community members, and to my esteemed colleagues from the ETA who are here tonight to be recognized for tenure, congratulations, you made it. I stand before you today with immense pride and joy as I represent our flag football team, winners of the first ever Section 1 Flag Football Championship. It is an honor to address this esteemed group and to share the incredible journey that we've embarked upon, culminating in our remarkable achievement. Firstly, I would like to express my deepest gratitude to Board of Education for their unwavering support and the dedication to fostering the culture of excellence in our district. I would also like to thank the Eastchester Sports Club for your continuing commitment to providing opportunities for these young women to participate in the sport and showcase their talent on the field. Tonight we stand as a testament to our, to the success of your vision. Our journey to the sectional championship has been a remarkable one, filled with countless hours of practice, dedication, and teamwork. Our players have shown exceptional skill, perseverance, and ability to rise above challenges. Their unwavering determination and pursuit of excellence has brought us to this pinnacle of success. Behind every successful team, there's great assisting coaches. Coach Robinson, with his wealth of information and experience, has nurtured and guided us through the highs and lows of the season. His commitment to the development of these athletes and individuals has been nothing short of inspirational. We owe a great deal of success to his commitment to this program. Thank you, Coach. I also would like to recognize the invaluable support of the broader community, more specifically, Mr. Rowland and Mr. Mondrone, who donated amazing uniforms. As the saying goes, look great, play great, and I think we did both. Good job. Thank you to the parents and the families for their encouragement, cheers, and unwavering support from the sidelines. You have been nothing but a constant source of motivation for our players, and we are truly grateful for their dedication and for standing by us every step of the way, especially in the championship game monsoon. Winning the sectional championship not only signifies the prowess on the field, but also highlights the value that we hold dear. Through this journey, we have learned the importance of discipline, teamwork, sportsmanship, and character. We have developed friendship, forged bonds, created memories that will last a lifetime. These lessons will undoubtedly extend beyond the football field and help shape these athletes into well-rounded individuals. Thank you for your time, and we promise to continue representing our school with the same passion, dedication, and sportsmanship that we brought to this momentous achievement. All right, I will stop speaking now, let these amazing athletes say a word. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm a junior, my name is Marissa, and I wanted to say thank you all for approving us when me, my teammates, Michelle Tissot and Sophia Collinger came here about a couple months ago. I mean, we've really grown as a family, I mean, we've, we've taken home a championship, and I just wanted to thank you for that, and I don't think I would be the same person I am without these girls behind me and my wonderful two coaches, so thank you so much.
Hi, everyone. My name is Michelle Tissot, I'm also a junior. As Marissa said, we, Sophia Collinger, Marissa and I came here a few months ago to plead with the board to please let us be a team, and you guys came through, so we just wanted to express how thankful we are for your support and for the community. It has been nothing but monumentous, because it's pushed us to get to the championship game. We had the fan bus come out and so many people that braved the literal monsoon that was the championship game. We learned so much, I gained, I think, 21 extra sisters, I think there's 21 people on this team, 21 extra sisters, we became such a family, and it taught me so much about sportsmanship and character and how to be just the best athlete, so thank you so much for approving us and for letting us come celebrate this with you.
I think they said a lot of it, but just again, thank you guys so much for approving us. I think that, like, this is a great opportunity for us, as a team, to come together with our amazing coaches. We couldn't have done it without you guys and without our coaches, like, our preparation level and our dedication, I hope it was shown to you guys. With a record of 16-2, I mean, like, we put everything out there in order to just represent the town of Eastchester, hopefully pay you guys back for, you know, supporting us, and hopefully we did a good job, so we just want to say thank you so much.
We would like to take a group photo with you, so if you want to come up here, folks, and...
If you guys face me this way, that's probably the best way to do it.
Coach, be sure we've got our posts again. Yeah, that's perfect. Those of you who need a live camera. It's all right, we got it coming.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Okay, let's talk academics for a minute, and then we'll get back to some of the wonderful adults who are here tonight. We had endorsed the program Algebra Regions for More in grade 8, and our middle school principal had some great news for us last week, and so I thought it was important to share this with the board and the community. Our goal was to increase the number of students, and therefore the percentage of students, who would be taking Algebra Regions next year in grade 8 as opposed to this year. So the first data point is that this year, we had 61% of our students, grade 8, participating in Algebra Regions, and with the hard work of many of the people who are in this room, our district administrators seated at the table, our building administrators, our faculty who are not represented here tonight in the math area, they were able to increase that percentage for next September from 61% this year to 66% next year, I'm sorry, I'm reading the number wrong, 41% this year to 66% next year, which in itself is a 25% increase. So that in itself is a huge gain, but what does that mean in terms of numbers? This year, that 41% is the equivalent of 93 students. Next year, we're going to have 73 more students, or a total of 166 next year, and that would be represented with the higher percentage in the 60s. So we think that is an enormous step forward. We love the fact of the parental option, and I talked to a few teachers just today who felt that parents really wanted to take advantage of this opportunity for their children, and so I'm going to ask Madeline, you are here with us, Madeline, come on up, would you want to say a word or two about the selection process and the work that your folks have done? And Greg or Scott, if you had anything you wanted to add, but let's give Madeline a chance.
Thank you for the opportunity, Dr. Valenti, and of course, thank you for the support of the board and our district administrators. We began this process early on, as it was an initiative of the board and Dr. Valenti, for the district to increase the participation of 8th grade students in the algebra program. Of course, this cannot be accomplished without the amazing middle school staff who's supportive and so collaborative, and through that process, student, parents were informed early on with the collaboration, as well as Ms. Hayanusi, our STEM supervisor, of the process, of giving opportunity to self-select enrollment for the current 7th grade, as well as thoroughly explain the process, not just of enrollment and selection, but also the option for an algebra lab option that's being added next year for students that may not typically qualify for enrollment based on our prior criteria, but that now can enroll, in addition to receiving that support of the, every alternating days, algebra lab to support them further in enrolling in Regents-level algebra in the 8th grade.
Any words, Scott or Greg, that you wanted to add to the work that was done?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment and say a special thank you to, not only to Madeline and to Janelle, but to our, truly to our math department, our 8th grade math teachers especially, both our math teachers and our special education teachers, and to our guidance counselors at the middle school. They, and they came into this discussion with open arms, and true- They, and they came into this discussion with open arms and truly came into this really ready to accept the challenge that is, that is ahead of them. And I think that's, that's important to note. Also want to thank you for supporting adding staff. This isn't possible without having the right teachers in order to do this, and by adding the right staff in order to make this possible, really think this is going to be a, a great experience for a much larger group of students. So, thank you to all involved in this.
Greg, if you want to say a word. I will say before Dr. Stowell comes, we were on a call with SEPTA, one of the SEPTA representatives earlier, and they went out of their way to commend this program, Greg, so you may want to comment on that.
Thank you, Dr. Valenti. I just want to echo what Mr. Wynn said. The teachers, the special educators, the math teachers, the, the school counselors, and Janelle and Madeline really worked, along with Irene Anuzi, really worked hard to tackle this problem, but they also worked in a way to make sure that was inclusive to all students who wanted the opportunity to kind of push themselves forward. So, I'm happy to report that part of that plan was to ensure that if students with disabilities needed support as they were, you know, maybe either they qualified through the typical qualification or they opted in, we wanted to make sure we had special education support. So, again, I also want to thank the board because some of that staffing also helps us support our students with special needs, and that allowed seven or eight students with disabilities who need support to have an advanced math class as an eighth grader, something that was not typical here in the past. So, I just want to thank everybody in this community, SEPTA, the Board of Education, Dr. Valenti, the staff at the middle school, and Mr. Wynn for all their support for students with differing abilities. And I think we're really excited about the opportunities that presents moving forward in their high school career.
Thank you, Dr. Stowell. And one more thing, I can tell you that the math teachers on both instructional teams, our school counselors, our staff, you know, our CSC chairperson, Erin McGee, we are ready for this next year. We are enthusiastic and really appreciative of all the support we received, and everyone that we've mentioned here tonight has been completely part of this process, and we could not have done it without having each other to support and, and walk us through the process that it took to get here. So, thank you as well for your support.
Okay, and if this works well, we'll monitor it very carefully. Next year, we might want to consider one of our eighth-grade sciences for the same approach. So, we'll take one step at a time. District Safety and Emergency Management Plan, as of tonight, posted on the district website, is the district-wide plan, and the clock has begun ticking as of tonight for a thirty-day public comment period. So, all viewers of this program, if you would go to the website at some point, take a look at the plan. If you'd like to make any comments, feel free to come to the Board Ed meeting on July 5th, which is our reorg meeting approximately thirty days from tonight, and we'd welcome any comments, and then the board will formally adopt the District Safety Emergency Plan for next school year. Michael, are you in the audience? Where are you, Michael? It is on the website, right, Michael?
Yes, it's under Safety.
Under what?
Safety.
Safety. So, that's a good place. Before you leave, we have some people we have to introduce. Tonight, we had a welcoming, not just to our tenure candidates, we also welcomed some new administrators to the district, and I would like to call them up formally to the dais and then ask them to be joined by some new teachers to the district. So, let me start with our new Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Facilities, Louise. Let's give her a round of applause.
Thank you. It, it's such a pleasure to be here, and I, I can't, I can't say thank you enough because I look at the student pictures and the excitement on their face and the wonderful things you're doing both academically and, and as athletes, and you're supporting all these, these different, you know, academic experiences, and it's just wonderful to be a part of it. So, I'm in the transitional stage, and I'll, I'll be a lot more ready for your questions soon.
Joining us next year, next fiscal year, July 1st, will be Derek Drift Facilities, Elliot Sheldon. Elliot?
Good evening, everyone. It was nice to meet many, some new faces here. Congratulations on your appointment to the board this coming July. I look forward to serving the community, diving into your capital projects, and, and learning about future projects. Thank you.
As a matter of fact, something else we'd like to put up on the website is the Architect and Construction Managers PowerPoint on phases of construction and what will happen next year so that the community can have access to it, and perhaps we can say a few words at the next board meeting about that. Okay? We also proudly have three teachers, new teachers here, who will be starting with us for the first time next school year. And again, I want to thank the principals who are here, the district administrators who have worked hard to bring these folks to us. Let's start first of all with Math AIS at Greenville and bring to the dais Victoria Cassidy.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to say thank you all so much for such a warm welcome tonight. I am elated to be here. I'm also so excited to be joining the Eastchester School District and the amazing community, and I'm so excited to start in September with, working with all the students at Greenville for, during the Math AIS position. So, thank you all so much.
We'd also like to introduce a literacy instructional coach for our next school year, who will be at Waverly as well as Ann Hutch and Greenville. Let's warmly welcome Megan Riccio.
My name is Megan Riccio. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I have over sixteen years' experience in elementary education and seven years as a literacy coach, so I'm very excited to amplify the impact of my work in such a wonderful district that's dedicated to helping support its teachers like you guys are. So, thank you again, and I'm looking forward to working together.
And lastly, in order to help us implement the Algebra R for More, Regions for More, we needed an additional staff member that Madeline alluded to, and so we'd like to welcome to our Eastchester family, Megan Finerty. Megan, for math eight.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to thank Dr. Valenti, the Board of Education, and the community for having me here tonight. My name is Megan Finerty, and I'm very excited to be here with you all. I graduated last year from Syracuse University with Bachelors of Science in Math and Math Education, and I'm currently completing my coursework at Hunter College in Adolescent Special Education and working at Edmont Junior/Senior High School. Thank you again. I'm really excited to get started as an eighth-grade math and math, or algebra teacher and start working here at Eastchester and start working to create lifelong learners of mathematics. Thank you.
Is this a good place?
Yeah, if you guys want to just squish together a little bit. Got it, thank you.
Just one other observation very quickly on the abatement process that will be going on at the, in the district this summer. We have written permission from the Architect and Construction Managers to use the fitness center at the high school. That will be declared a safe place for our students to use during the course of July and August. So, we have that in writing from our architects and engineers, and I did want to state that publicly so that the board was aware of that, as well as Brad Gitlin will be working with our staff and students to ensure that that program is successful. Okay? Are there any questions from the board on any of the items that were brought up this All right, well, then I will thank you all, and that's the end of my report.
All right, well, lots of congratulations in order tonight, so just congratulations again to all those who received tenure, our flag football team, and our two seniors on their incredible accomplishments as valedictorian and salutatorian, and also want to welcome Louise Lynch, Elliot Sheldon, and our three new teachers, Ms. Riccio, Ms. Finerty, and Ms. Cassidy. Welcome to Eastchester. And now we are up to the approval of items under the consent agenda. Who would like to move that? Anyone? Okay, Jackie, please.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the consent agenda, which includes the following: seven personnel agenda, eight committee on preschool, special education, special education recommendations, nine pupil personnel recommendations, ten business office recommendations, and eleven other business items.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, Matt, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? And we are up to future meeting dates. Our last meeting of this year will be June 20th. We are up to comments from the public. Are there any comments from the public this evening? I don't think so. It's quiet. All right. Any board comments? Board comments? No? Okay. All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn and enter into executive session? Okay. Christine and Jackie, all right, all in favor? Yeah, okay. All right, all in favor? All right. Good night, everyone. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.